...years, Mr. Paskey's gone. And we have someone else in that spot. And you know, things change. That's why I like to nail down the details. I mean, I didn't spend large numbers of years without doing it. And so that's what I'm trying to do. Not that anybody will read your wonderful minutes, Shar. Oh, Shar isn't here either. We're all on here today. All right, so could we just talk about the land development ordinance? Details on the larger utility infrastructure? I did spend time on that, probably too much for some people's days. Okay? I move to amend the minutes to reflect that, those concerns. More than an obstacle, I think we have rules and we have to make sure those rules are implemented. Will somebody please second me so you can vote me down?
I'll second you.
Okay?
And I have one comment or one change as well. This is the time to say that.
Well, we'll just, I mean, he's gonna have to say it.
Page four, item five. The second, the second rule under my name says the mayor vetoed R-10-15. That was reported by the mayor, not by me. He just happened to mention that while I was talking. So, that's all.
So, are we gonna modify the motion to include that as well?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yes, we have three modifications then.
I suppose, yes. No, we actually have residential care facilities on, which is another concern for me. We have it on the agenda. So, there's two, three things, right? Yours and...
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All abstain? So, there will be two more in favor and, I guess, three in favor and two abstentions. Did you abstain, sorry? Anything else regarding this position of minutes? Yeah, we're all set. Does it go into cases? We have number 15-20, southeastern Ohio real estate, former Pioneer subdivision, lot split. Mr. Paskey, can you review that?
Yeah, this is a continuation that got tabled at the last meeting. The last meeting, if you remember, the applicant had a access easement coming down what would be basically the north property line to service all the sites, so to speak. And they have removed that in both parcels now, the residual parcel and the new parcel, both have street frontage that meets the code requirements and they will be responsible for getting their own access in to their property off of River Road via their own, through their own property instead of through an access easement. So, they removed the access easement, in essence. So, it's the same application as before without the easement.
Is there anybody else who's here to speak on this? Could you just, when you get to the days, could you state your name and address first?
Sure. My name's Tom Parfitt. My address here in Athens, and my office is 82 Columbus Road, Athens. I apologize I wasn't here last meeting. I gotta, it was my fault I had the wrong time down on my thing, so I didn't show up. But I think there was some confusion or some concern about an easement that we had put on, as John said, the north side of the property. We'd actually done that for the potential tenant. When that happened, we talked to them, they were okay with us taking it out, so we actually had it resurveyed over the last two weeks and took that easement out that we were concerned about. So, I think we've addressed your issues.
Any questions from the commission?
Ms. Bane? Would you imagine that they're gonna be probably, I wonder, different entrances onto the road?
There, we have no reason to terminate any of the, any of the roads now. The only reason there would be if somebody who might want some residual might wanna do something, but right now we have no reason to change any of the roads.
But so, I mean, you, when we were presented with a map, I had the distinctive question that you might have four, as many as four lots.
I think, I think there's four, three or four, I don't know how many actually, there's three or four roads in there now off of River Road that come into the property. Does that answer your question? We have no reason to change those at this point.
I'll tell you about another town.
Yeah, right, and we don't have anything currently on any other tenant.
Would the, would it be in the interest of the larger community to have one entrance?
Well, it, once again, it kinda depends on what we're gonna do or what somebody might come in and ask for the property. We have no problem with having one main entrance. That way they could service this current tenant and anybody else. But right now, we don't, we don't know of any reason why we won't do one entrance, but we might have three or four, I don't know.
And the single entrance certainly wouldn't hurt...
None.
Church and its plants, would it?
No, it wouldn't hurt anybody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. What slope is the driveway? I mean, the current driveway as proposed, or you probably don't know?
It's not, it's not, it's not a steep, steep incline, it's a gradual incline. I don't know what the slope is.
I used to carry food sometimes to Pioneer and I thought I remembered it's going down.
No, there's a couple, there's a couple of other entrances later down the road that might be a little steeper, but this one that's right next to this property is kinda gradual.
Okay, thank you.
What we're, what we're trying to do is, once, once we get this done, we're gonna go in there, as you know, we've cleaned it up quite a bit, but we're gonna actually go in there, we've got somebody coming in this fall to mow and kinda clean up the remaining jump that's in there. So, we're hoping it turns out to be a real nice project, please, good morning.
Okay. Thank you.
I would just say, it's just a little odd that you came before this commission and then to council to negate a platted subdivision and now we're back to, you know, subdivisions.
Well, what had happened is, the way we understood it is, in order for us to get this surveyed for our surveyor and to make it work for this tenant, we couldn't make it work for the specific lots that they had subdivided out originally, so it wouldn't work for them. So, our engineer or our surveyor said, "Well, why don't we get this negated so we can give them exactly what they want." Originally, we thought they wanted to go parallel with 33 so that they had access to the bike path, but they decided they didn't want this. This is out of the floodplain for them and this is where they wanna build. So, we really didn't, that's why we couldn't just say, "Let's take lot 53 through 97 and give it to them," didn't work that for them. That's why we did this.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, so continuing to be bothersome. In the future, if you would, some additional subdivisions of the remainder, remaining or residual plot, would you be adverse to putting the road in? I mean, the one single entrance?
If it was okay with the people, not a problem at all for us.
But I mean, you know, the other people, the people out there who use that road probably would like, I mean, if the traffic is way, is really...
I don't think we're gonna have a lot of traffic with the turnouts.
Except Sunday morning.
Right now, it wasn't...
Wednesday night?
There may be, but there's not gonna be a lot of traffic. I hate to say yes or no because somebody might want a parcel that, just a road frontage and a separate entrance into it. If they're okay with it, we're fine with it, doesn't make any difference at all. Right now, we have nobody at all looking at the residual.
'Cause that would be, I mean, that's typically the way you would imagine it happening, so...
Well, it'd be nice if somebody came around and just took the remaining nine acres and we could make one thing, that'd be great.
Or even if you made three?
Yeah.
It'd be cause, then they'd all, then they'd have an access.
To each property.
Yeah.
Right.
When Brent, Brent came in my office and John Brainer, the surveyor, and they did state that if that was to happen, where it got broken into three or four, that they understand the requirements of the major subdivision and the easement, access easement, going to city council, and they said they would take care of that at that time, when, if, when they knew the tenant, if that was ever gonna happen. As Tom just said, if it remains all one large parcel, may never happen because the farther in the north, farther north part of this parcel has another access on it already itself, too. So, depends what happens on the residual part, but whatever it may be, if it gets subdivided into further lots, it will have to come through us and then we'll treat it accordingly from there.
Okay. Last question. Do you think it's necessary to notify ODOT about this change? Is it close enough to the road? Our, our regulations say we're supposed to have, but they are supposed to be notified when a major road is. I don't even know the numbers. I'm lucky I know my names.
The current tenant knows there's only a right-hand turn and a right-hand turnout, so they're very aware of that.
Okay.
I think what Nancy's referencing is that section of code that I believe you think is faulty, that spoke about.
There's numbers wrong. There is a section, and that references there. There is a section about notifying ODOT for a major subdivision, and I didn't think it was for a minor, but...
I just thought of, you know, I was...
I don't think it's faulty, period, Paul.
Oh, you didn't?
There's a portion where it says that, that it doesn't make any sense to be referencing that on an entirely different matter than the press standard subdivision of real estate. I don't know whether it's, without having the code from me, I don't know how it would apply to this section.
Okay. I didn't think it was impaired.
So, that was, you know, my uncomfortable level is the fact that you vacate a subdivision and come back and then it sounds like we could...
Subdivision was like, I don't know, 60 lots or something, and originally what we tried to do is see if we could take a section off 15 or 20 lots for these folks, and unfortunately they didn't like that because it didn't give them the exact, lot level up they wanted for their specific situation. That's why we had to do that. And we knew we weren't gonna go in and put trailers in or put houses in those lots or anything like that. That's not our intention. We had no idea what the remaining part would be, but I would think it would have to be some sort of, something that will foot along this group or maybe some apartments or something, I don't know. But we wouldn't need those specific lots as it was originally in that subdivision. We're not gonna go out and put houses or trailers or anything like that. That won't work for us.
Are there any other questions or observations?
Just request that the next, I anticipate something in the future.
We hope so. We do hope so, but right now we don't have to.
Kind of bringing it all together at that time so we can determine what the major minor...
The people that we've been dealing with and their architects and engineers and stuff are, they envision this being a, you know, a lot of green space, a lot of trees, a lot of nice area, and that's what we're hoping for, 'cause right now it's an eyesore. It's not as bad as it was, it still is.
Thank you.
Does anyone care to put a motion together? And are there any contingencies that...
I didn't see any. John, were there any contingencies?
No.
Okay.
Then I move for approval of the former Pioneer trailer park. Southeastern Ohio Real Estate.
If I may, it does state, Tom, you might wanna be aware of this, "Any plan within 300 feet of the center line of a state highway for which changes are proposed, or any land within a radius of 500 feet from the point of intersection of said, of said center line with any public road or highway, requires that the planning commission give notice by registered or certified mail to the highway director." So, I probably, we should notify them, let them know this has occurred, so...
What was the distance, Ken?
It's 300 feet of the center line of a state highway and 500 feet from the point of intersection of said center line. So, you probably hit it twice, both of those.
I'm not sure the 300 feet.
Right.
Because there's quite a bit of, of, of easement, or not easement, but state property before it comes down to one between 30 and 50.
What this is in regards to, it states if the director notifies planning commission that he shall proceed to acquire the land needed, the planning commissioner shall refuse to approve the plan. So, basically, this is saying that the state wants the land, we should notify them. So, we'll send a letter to the state and let them know that, see if they want it, and then if they do, I guess they gotta work with you on that.
Well, there's the first modification to the motion.
John, what was the department where the letter was supposed to be directed to her?
It's director of the local high department of transportation, director.
Oh, I was playing that be the deputy director of District 10.
Yeah.
It doesn't, it just says by registered or certified mail to the highway director. Highway director. So, that would probably go to Columbus, I would think.
Well, we'll send it to them and then forward it.
I think we should add a minimum copy District 10.
Right, I agree.
So, it's a shall, and it's basically, there's no action? It's not, it's not notified in advance? It's...
No, just, the planning commission shall notify, and then that gives them the option if they want to proceed with purchasing.
Remember when we had all the situation with that road closure there? You know, how they closed Johnson Road across, just one thing. There was quite a few people there at that meeting, and some of them were from the state of Iowa. We actually talked to them about trying to put a road underneath 33 or two, so we could get the clips, and everybody was interested. They said they weren't interested at that time.
Cost money.
So, we had that meeting.
We'll send a copy of this to ODOT, and then if they wish to purchase the land or take it for whatever need, then they can get ahold of the property owner. And at that point, obviously, the lot split would be void, so...
Just out of curiosity, with the development of this lot, would that change ODOT's mind as far as like whether a light would go in that as opposed to just redirecting traffic?
I think the intent is to notify ODOT that a development may be occurring on real estate adjacent to the highway, and so if ODOT for any reason has plans to build, you know, new Clover Leaf or something like that, where they would need to acquire real estate, it makes sense for them to do that, that taking of real estate prior to development occurring. But what it does say is, upon note, if the director notifies the planning commission that he shall proceed to acquire the land needed, the planning commission shall refuse to approve the plan.
Well, see, I feel like we may be behind, like this step is, we failed, that we need to have that step prior to...
But there's no, it doesn't say how long the director has to decide, it doesn't give any notification, so...
Lost in Columbus in the paper.
And it's odd that it says the planning commission shall be the one to forward a letter to ODOT, so, not us.
Can we just send it?
Yeah. Well, I'll draft something up, get with Shar, and we'll send it to District 10.
Ms. Nysley?
But I do have a question, like Ms. Ryan Mosley, that maybe it would put it in the process, if you're looking at it historically, if you have the letter from the highway department or notice that they were certified and they, they didn't have a problem, or they received a certified copy and didn't have a problem with it, and then approve it or recommend for moving it on.
Mr. Parfitt, what if we sent the notifying or the certified and requested their presence or response by October 15th? I mean, that doesn't derail your project and this...
The tenant is actually going in there next week to do some drilling so that they can determine what they're, how to go about building the building, but I feel 90% comfortable that the state's not wanting this property, so I have no problem waiting till October 15th, that's fine with me.
The letter...
I'm uncomfortable approving if then the state tells me that we shall refuse, so I, but I really don't wanna delay it. This is your, it'll be like your third to Times of Charm, maybe?
No, that's all right.
Did you wanna table this then?
Yes. May I move to table pending this call?
I don't know. Do you think it's a table, or does the planning commission state that we will forward the stuff to ODOT and wait, further await their answer?
And 15th of October is what?
I dropped dead.
Right.
That they either show up here to protest or we have something in hand so we can proceed.
John, if you want, you can read up my information and make a contact and we'll get to that time if you respond.
Okay. Yeah, because the way it stated, the planning commission's the one that's to notify them was kind of odd, but...
If you don't hear anything from ODOT by the 15th, I mean, unless Mr. Parfitt changes his plans, you, I don't even think it needs to be present at the 15th. You can just, you can update based on today's discussion unless, I would think.
Okay, so a motion, then a table?
So, moved.
And seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that's unanimous? So, that'll be a drop dead date of October 15th.
We'll get the stuff out to them.
I apologize that our process got derailed or...
Everything's new.
Ms. Nysley, did you want?
Yeah.
Going into communications, the residential care facilities, parking requirements. Ms. Bane, do you wanna, or Paulie, did you...
I don't think Jeff has a copy of this, so if he wanted to follow along, if someone could share the residential care facility pieces. Thank you. No, I'm not running this, anyway.
Since I wasn't here the last meeting...
I left.
Nancy, did you wanna?
Kristy, you want to? What's up? You remember, I, well, so I think basically in terms of the changes to code, not related to parking, I think we're all on the same page with those, right?
Pass the...
Yes. So, and the only thing that we didn't attend to were parking requirements specific to residential care facilities. And so, we're starting with the notion of one space per two bedrooms and the...
I spoke with the mayor about this before he left, caught him in the hallway, and he said, I had a couple of other proposals, and I'll just, he said, "Throw out all three of them and see where they go." So, if you wanna, one could be the one-to-one ratio.
Are these in this packet or are you just telling us now?
No, it's just, I'm just telling you now, one of them would be the one-to-one ratio, one, one parking space per one bed. One would be the one parking space per two beds, as we had talked before. And the third, which I did a little research on, going back to my past, is one parking space per two beds plus one van accessible space per six beds. So, in a facility, a six-bed facility would have three spaces plus a van accessible space, total of four, knowing that they would probably have one van on site most of the time.
Could I ask you, from your previous experience, is, well, probably, I don't know if it'll work, I was gonna go check it and I never did, but do we have a resident, oh, not a resident owner, but a residential manager? A manager who's resident, lives in the place?
Do not live, it's staffed. There will always be two on staff pretty much at the same time. So, as you discussed before, you would have two folks working there at all times during the day. There could potentially be three, or that third person could be a dietitian or...
OT.
Yeah, but they come, they come and go amongst all the facilities. And then, like I said, and then that would, this would, this concept would allow also for their van, which is usually each facility comes with their own van, to be parked there at all times and not use up one of the other spaces, so...
I must say that having the comparison is certainly welcome, and I like the last one, the third one. I think that if they were a smaller facility, then they would have a van accessible and two spots, right?
They would have three.
I mean, if they had a van accessible spot, I mean, if they were four bedrooms...
If there were four beds, it'd be two spots plus a van accessible, yes.
Okay.
Sounds reasonable to me, the three-to-one with the van accessible.
It's two-to-one.
Two-to-one.
Two-to-one plus one van per six beds.
I, somehow I have a total of four. Did I misunderstood that?
It would be a total of four if it was a six-bed facility.
And if a...
Correct.
So, that's two-to-one for the, for the beds, that's three spaces, and then the fourth one is per the van. If it was an eight-bed facility, it would have four plus the van. It would have five parking spaces.
So, the...
So, just to get two parking spaces to one bed plus the van accessible?
No, one parking space per two bedrooms...
Right, okay.
Plus one van accessible space per six bedrooms.
So, the increase at eight just adds the regular parking space?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I think that sounds reasonable.
Anybody else care to comment? Paulie, did you wanna propose the motion then?
I move to accept the recommendation for the residential care facilities parking requirements to be the one-to-two plus the accessible, van accessible.
Per six.
Per six beds.
There you go.
Second?
Right.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that's unanimous.
I'm going to abstain.
Uh, one abstention, so there's four in favor and one abstention. Okay, thank you. See, report from the city planner. Mr. O?
We received, we've been working with the Athens County Economic Development Council and the, they received a grant about a year ago to do Brownfield, EPA Brownfield assessments around the county. We applied for and received one of their, some of their funding to do a Phase One EPA study for the Armory, which was to identify potential issues that could be at a building that old with different uses in there at that location over time. I think what we, we received a draft report from them, nothing that we probably weren't already aware of, which is that there's, there's some asbestos in the boiler room, which we were already aware of, as well as it's an old building, so there's likely lead paint, as well as possibly asbestos tiles on the floor, which is pretty typical for, if you see nine-inch or eight-inch square tiles. Those are all issues that can be remediated with relative ease. We are gonna be working with them to do a, to talk about the opportunity to do what's called an EPA Phase Two study, which will tell you not only what, which identifies what we have, but tells you how to, how to address those impacts, how to remove them, and what that anticipates, what kind of cost. So, I've been discussing with Sarah Mars from Athens County Economic Development on how to move forward with that. More to follow. I don't have too much exciting report on that right now.
Paul, would we be able to, do we have to reapply then to, for Phase Two through the...
That would be a second process, yeah, that's a new process.
And dare we mention the findings on 50 North Court? I didn't bring a copy of it.
Within that study, yeah, part of the process with an EPA Phase One is that they identify potential impacts on the site from historic use... potential impacts on the site from historic uses. So, for the armory, for example, you know, there's, there's the lead-based paint and the asbestos, which are typical of older buildings anyway, but also are there potential risks to that site because prior to the armory being constructed was actually a mining site. They extracted clay from the hillside to, to make Athens bricks. So, but they also look at, within a distance around a location to see if there's any potential impacts from other locations, and within, with the armory site, they looked, I think it did a quarter mile or half mile radius, and there is, you know, different gas stations that at some points existed at those times, and there could be potential impacts from there. One thing they did report specifically is that 50 North Court Street, which was the BP location, there was an environmental covenant that was agreed to that states that, as it stands, without detailed remediation, residential uses are not permitted at that location under the standards of the covenant that was agreed to. So, yes.
Could you, would they allow you to mitigate the lead paint or mitigate, I mean, given the fact it's not gonna be used for residential purposes?
I'm not sure, it didn't, we don't, I didn't, I haven't had time to ask those questions yet. I just reviewed the, the report yesterday and gave some comments back to them, but yeah, there's ways to, there's ways to address those things.
Lower cost.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Paskey?
I just wanted to, I didn't have really anything to report, but it's going, going back a little bit onto the lot splits on Old Peach, and I know one of the concerns that you had, Nancy, was that the, it was Forest Service agreement on that that was set up when they.
What, did you just say?
The, the previous owner had a Forest Service agreement for the site to be a part of the forestry service, tree planting, et cetera, to remain as it is, but that included her house as well, which put it over 10 acres. When, when the land just went by itself, that put it under 10 acres, which kinda took it out, but in any instance, that does not transfer with property owners. It, once the property, it's up to the new property owner to keep it in that program if they wish to do so, and if not, they're responsible for last two years of back taxes on the property, which they're aware of and which they are gonna be paying, so.
And Nancy, after today, what we just had occur with Pioneer, I mean, does ODOT need to be notified if it's a radius by air?
Could you just send them the?
Yeah, we've sent it to them, too, you know.
I actually asked Paul.
That's gonna be a tough access for 30.
I understand, but I mean, if this is what it.
But maybe they have plans to build a bridge, I don't know.
Yeah, there was a preservation covenant with one of the hillsides up there, remember I talked to?
That's the one I think I've worked, I think we're talking the same thing. I talked to, talked to Athens Salon Water Conservation District, and they're the one that informed me of all this, and then I called over and talked to the county auditor's office and asked if it was transferable or how that went, and if they, it does not stay